...of report about what led to January 6th and recommend changes to laws to try to prevent it from happening again. They are also compiling a case that they can turn over to the Justice Department and argue that this amounts to crimes on behalf of Donald Trump and his allies.
Mm-hmm.
That's what's known as a criminal referral.
Right.
And this was the first test in court before a judge of the evidence they've compiled so far. They put these explosive allegations into court saying the President of the United States had committed felonies, and they got exactly the ruling they wanted. And in fact, the judge's language was, in some cases, even stronger than the language that they had used in their filing.
Got it.
There are more than a dozen former federal prosecutors working on this case on behalf of the January 6th Committee, and they took this as a major win, that they are on the right track in compiling the case against Donald Trump. And it will only bolster their attempts to pursue a criminal referral against Donald Trump and his allies when the committee wraps up its work.
Okay, but let's make sure we introduce a lot of caveats here, because like you said, Luke, this was a ruling by a judge in a civil court. And so is there a version of this where the ruling that you have just described to us shouldn't give the January 6th Committee a whole lot of confidence?
Yes, for a couple of reasons. One, this is a civil case, not a criminal case. In a criminal case, you have a much higher standard, which is beyond a reasonable doubt. And in a civil case, this threshold is much, much lower.
Mm-hmm.
This was a preponderance of the evidence. And so that's a big jump to go from what lawyers view as a 51% of the evidence threshold to a overwhelming standard, which is beyond a reasonable doubt. The second consideration is the politics of this. We have no tradition in America of one administration coming in and trying to prosecute the previous administration. We don't throw our past presidents in jail. We don't, we don't do that. We have no history of it. And so for the Justice Department to pursue a former president would be unprecedented. And so that's a serious consideration for anyone at the Justice Department who is thinking about charging Donald Trump. Do we want to be the country where you prosecute the person who just held the White House before you? So there's a lot of serious considerations for Merrick Garland and the Justice Department as they consider this case.
Well, to that point, do we know how the Department of Justice sees this civil ruling and the conclusion that that judge came to?
Well, we don't. Attorney General Merrick Garland has been very tight-lipped. The Justice Department is doing its own investigation, and we know that they're proceeding on that. They've charged more than 770 of the rioters, and we do know they're exploring the possibility of working their way up the food chain to perhaps even higher-ranking people who were part of the plan. That said, I've talked with several former federal prosecutors who said that this ruling has to be ringing alarm bells at the Department of Justice, that when you have a federal judge who has looked at the evidence presented by the January 6th Committee and written the ruling that he did, you're headed down the path towards a strong case.
So what these former federal prosecutors are telling you is that this ruling may, at the very least, increase the pressure on the Justice Department to bring a criminal case against the former president, which would be one of the most momentous decisions of our time.
What we can say is that it gives the people who want to charge the former president more ammunition. Meanwhile, the committee will take this evidence, these emails from John Eastman, and continue to build their case as they investigate January 6th. We've heard there's plans to bring in 100 more witnesses as they move towards holding public hearings and eventually then filing their final report in which they will unveil all of the evidence they've accumulated over this last year. And they believe that all of that will only build on top of the case that they've been constructing and that they successfully argued in front of the judge in the case of John Eastman.
I have to say, I am very much struck by the irony of the fact that if John Eastman had just complied with the January 6th Committee's subpoenas, this would never have happened, right? In trying to block the committee's work, it seems, based on this ruling, he may have actually just strengthened their hand.
Yes. If he never invoked attorney-client privilege, there is never the opportunity this early in the process for the January 6th Committee to test out their arguments about criminality. And it gave them a rare chance to put all of this evidence into the court record and have a judge decide whether or not they were on the right path. And they heard overwhelmingly that they are.
Luke, thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thanks for having me.
Luke Broadwater is a congressional reporter for The New York Times. On Sunday, The Times reported that Attorney General Merrick Garland is under growing pressure, especially from Democrats, to bring criminal charges against Donald Trump over his role in the events leading up to and on January 6th, and that President Biden himself has confided to his inner circle that he believes Trump should be prosecuted.
All right, let's get started. All right, Madam Clerk, we don't need to hold the roll.
Yeah, we do need to call the roll. It's a seven session, so we do.
Okay. Is that it? Because I don't have a script on anything else.
You don't have a script?
No, not for this session. I was going to take it, but I don't have nothing on here. I don't have it.
You don't have it on? For sure.
She's going to look through our stuff.
Okay, okay, okay. Just give it to me.
I don't have a seven o'clock piece. It's on the back or something?
Right.
I don't look on the back, man.
So, so this way, she's got front and back, so I can look in that way, 22, 23, 24.
Okay. I haven't the others either.
The 7:00 PM session of Roanoke City Council is hereby called the order, and I'll ask our clerk, Ms. Susan McCord, to please call the roll.
Mr. Cobb?
Here.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Here.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Here.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Here.
Mr. Best Fitch?
Here.
And Mayor Lee. Mayor Lee?
Here.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Equanimous presence. Tonight, the invocation will be delivered by Councilmember Joseph L. Cobb, and following that, I will lead you in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join Councilman Cobb.
Gracious God, we thank you for the gift of this city, the gift of our residents, the natural beauty, the rich diversity, and all of the ways in which we bring meaning to this place. Be with us tonight as we listen, as we learn, as we love more deeply, and may your wisdom be upon us all. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Welcome, everybody, to this, tonight's meeting of public hearings. But first, let me tell you, the council meetings are televised live and replayed on RBTV Channel 3 on Thursdays at 7:00 PM and Saturdays from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and video streamed through Facebook Live at facebook.com/roanokeva. Council meetings are offered with closed captioning for the deaf or hard of hearing. All right. All right. A, the public hearing, which is, which is why we're here tonight, to receive views of citizens regarding the applicants interviewed at 3:30 PM to fill the nine-month term of office of former Councilmember Robert L. Jeffrey Jr., ending December 31st, 2002. We're going to open the public hearing, and there are five people that were interviewed today. Now, if you're here to speak on anything other than those five, that's not why we're here, all right? And I will stop you if you're going, if you get out there on some other issue. You've got five people, and I welcome your comments, good, bad, indifferent, all right? All right, the public hearings are now open. And I have the clerk to read the names of the candidates for consideration.
Suzanne Osborne, Keisha Preston, Anita Price, Luke Pretty, and Kevin Berry.
Okay. So we can start that, then we'll recognize the speakers.
All right. Our first speaker is Dr. Brenda Hale.
And each speaker has three minutes?
Three minutes.
Okay.
I am very honored to be here tonight. Tonight, y'all will hear from a wealth of citizens, and you will have the difficult task on deciding who is the best individuals to fill the council vacancy. Recently, the Roanoke City Council and the community have endured an extremely unconscionable situation. Now, y'all have a fiduciary duty to restore stability, confidence, and trust not only to the council but to the community. Also, your missions are still waiting for the team to be reorganized. Now, to do this, I must tell you about an individual where her moral compass leans solidly as an extraordinary, phenomenal woman, a person who is admired, who is held in high esteem, and who loves all of the citizens, from the youngest to the oldest. I say again, all of Roanoke, which includes the 105 nationalities here. This woman previously was indeed an honorable council member, whose records speak of great accomplishments, to include special interventions for all of our youth. I ask that you prevail this opportunity to her and let her star continue to shine. Ladies and gentlemen, I give 100% support in all the people that stand behind me to the reappointment of Mrs. Anita James Price to the Roanoke City Council. Thank you for this opportunity to speak on her behalf, and let's get busy.
Good evening, Mayor Lee, Vice Mayor White Boyd, and members of City Council. My name is Julie Wagner. I am here tonight to support Luke Pretty for appointment to City Council. When I think about Luke, two things come to mind. The first thing is his love for Roanoke. Luke cares deeply about the city. Not only is Luke an active member of the Roanoke City Democratic Committee, he is also chair of, he also chairs Parks and Rec, a committee he has been a part of for the past four years. The second thing which comes to mind is Luke's love for code. In fact, one time while I was attending a session of City Council, I watched Luke from afar mouth quote along with the city attorney. Mind you, this was from Luke's memory. He was not reading the code. When working on projects with Luke, I can count on him to be detail-oriented, and he will help to keep all of us on track. He is easy to work with and will work for the common goal of what is good for Roanoke, Democrats, and the committee. Luke is a person who you can collaborate with to help for the common good. I have also witnessed Luke go to great lengths to help people. I am proud to live in a city focused on promoting equity. Our council currently lacks a young voice. What message does not having a young voice on council send to the younger voters who are working hard to have a seat at the table? In previous conversations I have had with Luke, I am certain he will work to support the Equity and Empowerment Board. He will deliver resources needed to strengthen their work. Luke is a positive, progressive leader in the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim Endino.
My name is Emily Pretty. I am Luke's sister-in-law. I'll be reading on behalf of Jim Endino. Luke's fiancee, who could not be here today. For Jim, it's actually tomorrow, as he's in the Philippines. I'm sure if we could call him in the future, he would say all the great things Luke has done for the city, because by then I will expect you've already appointed him. Good evening, Mayor, and to the respective members of City Council. My name is Jim Endino, and I'm a resident of Roanoke City. It is with great pleasure that I speak to you today to support Luke Pretty for City Council. There are two reasons why I believe Luke is the best choice for this position. First is because he is my partner, my soon-to-be husband, and a wonderful human being. Second, he consistently displays values of honesty, hard work, and public service. Mayor, I've known Luke for the last four years, and I have always found him dependable and efficient. His intelligence and accomplishments as legislative aide, Parks and Recreation Board, and many more complement precisely to the City Council appointment and the honor and opportunity bestowed by this position. We visited the Philippines this past March 18th so that he could meet my family for the first time and experience the country and culture. Luke was able to quickly immerse himself. This is not uncommon for a person like Luke, who gives as much attention to detail as he does. While there, he personally spent time trying all modes of transportation. He spoke with the native people about the culture. He talked to policemen about safety. He had conversations with teachers and nurses in the area, and he spoke with business owners about their current situations. All these things and more show his willingness to take on different issues and genuinely immerse himself. He has repeatedly impressed me over the years, and I am proud of him. His skills do not end with office work. He also projects a kind and respectful attitude with all of his interactions. He has resolved conflicts and handled difficult situations with remarkable and admirable tact. Having learned of the call for appointment for City Council, I can think of no one more deserving of this position than Luke. I told him to apply. He was hesitant at first because it meant cutting the trip short, even though it meant so much to both of us. I am confident that he is the right person to fill this position. Otherwise, he would not be here today. Luke is a bright young person, and he has a vision for this wonderful city. He has a goal in mind, and he is bold enough to commit to help to improve the city. He loves people, works hard, and always does what is right and just. I believe these characteristics represent all that is good in our city, and I am proud to support him for this position. His passion and enthusiasm for Roanoke is a strong emotion, and I call it a wonderful gift and a power. His success will be Roanoke's success. I hope you consider him. Thank you.
Mary Frazier.
Good evening to Mayor Lee, Vice Mayor White Boyd, and members of the council. My name is Mary Frazier. I'm a resident of Roanoke City, and I am speaking on behalf of myself and several others who unfortunately cannot be in attendance tonight. I would like to state my wholehearted support for the appointment of Kaisha Preston to Roanoke City Council. Ms. Preston has already demonstrated her ability to create positive change by writing the Domestic Violence Victims Protection Act, effectively changing state law and removing barriers that victims face when leaving their abusers and seeking new housing. I believe Ms. Preston has and will represent those most vulnerable in our communities by listening to and working closely with the city's residents to find informed solutions to community-based issues. Furthermore, I think Ms. Preston's experience as a young, single mother who was born and raised in Roanoke will be invaluable to the council. This representation, this representation in Ms. Preston's qualifications will be, will be significant in aiding the council in creating positive change in our city. It is for these reasons and more that I strongly support the appointment of Ms. Preston, and I ask the council to speak, to please take these reasons to heart by choosing Kaisha Preston. Thank you.
Maynard Keller.
Mayor Lee, Vice Mayor White Boyd, members of Roanoke City Council, council staff, and Roanoke citizens. My name is Maynard Keller, and I'm the president of American Financial Planning, president of the Roanoke Valley Region AACA, vice chairman of the Roanoke City Republican Party, and have served as an elder at Hope of Israel Congregation. There are two basic choices in appointing a new City Council member. You can choose someone who will rubber stamp your agenda and agree with everything you say. In other words, a yes man or a yes woman. There are plenty of people who will do that for you. Or you can choose someone who offers a different perspective, a perspective that 11,268 people agreed with in the last City Council election, a perspective that is not currently represented on City Council, a perspective which you disenfranchised this afternoon when you refused to even interview Peg Maguire. Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Just a minute, just a minute.
Yes.
Are you here to speak on any of the five people that spoke today?
I'm addressing all of them right now. Vice Mayor White Boyd, when you lost your, your 2016 City Council race by 20, 49 votes?
I'm not here to hear that. You, you are speaking, identify the person that you're speaking on.
Would you please give me in writing?
No, I'm not going to give you a write it. I want you to identify who you're speaking for, but you-
I'm speaking for the constituents of Roanoke.
This is a hearing not for you to come down here and criticize council for what, how this process went.
Okay.
Now, you either come down and speak on behalf of somebody, or you can take your seat.
I am speaking on behalf of somebody.
Who? Tell me who.
Peg Maguire.
Peg Maguire is not on this list.
Exactly, and that's why I'm speaking on her behalf.
No, well, we're not hearing that tonight.
That's right, because I am. I'm speaking.
No, sir, you're done.
I have three minutes.
You're done.
I am not.
You, you are not speaking.
Show me in writing, show me in writing where I am limited to the content.
This hearing is for-
Show me in writing.
A review. No, sir, we're not hearing that. You're here to speak. This hearing is for the candidates that were interviewed today.
And Peg was specially interviewed today.
Peg Maguire was not on that list.
And that's the problem.
Well, that's another problem. That's another date, but we're not listening to that tonight. You can speak on behalf of any of these candidates, and that's it. If you're not doing that, then we're not hearing you tonight. You come to another hearing, but not this one.
Thank you.
Next speaker.
Carolyn Garcia. Crystal Pretty.
I am Crystal Pretty, Luke's mother, and I would like to thank City Council for allowing me to speak. Luke is ready to go to work, day one. With his insight and experience, he is already planning and working in the city and this valley and in Richmond on our behalf. A large part of his work, as our state Senator's Chief of Staff, includes budget and appropriations. Everything he does depends upon relationships with constituents at every level, city residents and businesses, city government and services, and a network of legislators and policymakers that are statewide. He knows how to find solutions to everyday problems, and he does this with limited time and limited resources. The future of our city demands that City Council look forward and not settle for the safe or the familiar. I want you to embrace and welcome the perspective and energy of a new generation. Thank you.
Thank you. Lee Sweeney.
I didn't realize that I had been signed up for Jim. I was going to sign up for the second one.
Good evening, Mayor Lee, Vice Mayor White Boyd, and members of City Council. Thank you for your time. My name is Sarah Davis-Dean, and I'm a resident of Roanoke City. This isn't the first time I've spoken in front of an audience to vouch for my colleague, my collaborator, and most of all, my friend, Luke Pretty, and I can't imagine it will be my last. In fact, this isn't even the first time in front of, I've stood in front of the Roanoke City Council and asked you to put your faith and trust in Luke the way that I have. But in the time that has passed since the last time I asked you to appoint Luke Pretty to City Council, his qualifications, experience, and leadership ability have increased greatly. I won't go over Luke's qualifications for you all. I know all of you know him, and you all know what he's achieved in his three short decades of life. I've worked alongside Luke on campaigns, both community-based and political campaigns, and what I can tell you is that there are a few people in Roanoke that approach their daily life in the city the way that Luke does, with constant attention to how he can make this city and the lives of the people that live here better. Every time I talk to Luke, even on just a friend level, grabbing a beer with him at one of our downtown breweries, the conversation always turns to what he can do to improve people's lives, more specifically, the lives of Roanoker's. If you know me, you know I love this city, but sometime Luke, sometimes Luke makes me feel like my dedication to the star city is lacking compared to his. He's involved in so many facets of Roanoke life, I couldn't begin to list them all in a short time, the short time amount of time that I have here. But I will tell you this. When he ran for City Council in a primary previously, and we sat down to strategize for his campaign, I asked him the same question I ask every candidate that I dedicate my time to. Why are you running? Luke told me he was running because he wanted to help the people of Roanoke and that he's going to help the people of Roanoke whether or not he's on City Council. But on council, he would have access- But on council, he would have access to more resources to be able to do that. Luke didn't make it onto City Council in that race, but he has held true to that promise. His dedication to the people of Roanoke has not wavered, and he's worked nonstop to make our lives better. He will continue to do so whether or not he's chosen today. But I'm asking that you give him the chance to do the work from where you sit and see where he can take us from there. Thank you.
Charlie Nave.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, and City Council members. I came here with prepared remarks that I'm not going to, that I'm not going to utter tonight. I'd rather talk about the crime problem and how these candidates can address it. And I think you're all aware of our crime problem. We have an absurd number of shootings now.
Mr. Nave, we're not here to hear that. That's another meeting. This meeting, we only want to hear from citizens who want to come and speak on behalf of those candidates that were interviewed today.
Yeah. I understand what you're saying. But you did say at the beginning of the meeting that you were here to understand comments, good, bad, and indifferent. So I would imagine that you ought to be, under those rules even, hearing and receiving comments that are bad about the people that have been nominated. And I believe that any candidate that has been approved this afternoon and interviewed this afternoon that is associated with the Black Lives Matter movement and the unrest that happened in the city ought not to be considered. Thank you.
Next.
Nick Hagan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, and members of the City Council. My name is Nick Hagan. Among other things, I am a property developer and attorney here in Roanoke City. Now, given what has just occurred, I'm just going to be as brief as possible. Under, in my interpretation of Virginia law, this is a may appointment, not a must appointment. As such, I believe that the City Council is, by appointing anyone who did not receive the fourth amount of votes in the last election, that...
Who are you here to speak on behalf of? What person?
I believe that this council should not be appointing anybody if they have not received the, any sort of votes.
I'm asking you one more time.
Because I'm...
Of the five people that we interviewed today, right now, who are you speaking on behalf of? Which one?
I'm arguing that there is a position which you can take where there is a, no, none of them are...
This is not that type of hearing.
So when would be a good hearing for this?
Well, next time we meet at council, if you want to come and say that.
So next time on April 18th, I'll be able to address this council?
But not right now.
But after, this is after you will have already announced the appointment. So if the appointment shouldn't happen because you all are deciding...
Well, speak on that appointment. Speak on who you're supporting here now.
I'm saying that none of them should be appointed, sir.
Well, that's not, we're not hearing you tonight.
Okay. Like I said, I just want to know why you all believe that you all have more say than the people you claim to represent. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Lorena Wilson.
Who's the next speaker?
Lorena Wilson.
Good afternoon. Let's try again. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Oh, it's evening. Good evening. Oh, my goodness, y'all, you gotta have a little more excitement here. Um, my name is Lorena Taylor Rollins Wilson. I am a citizen of the Roanoke Valley. I'm originally from Florida, but I'm here on behalf of a young lady that I truly believe in. I also prepared a speech, but I don't think I should speak that about that right now. I'm just going to go from the heart. When I originally came here, I knew absolutely no one. I knew no one. I came here with my four children, my husband, and myself from a city from, I have twenty-one brothers and sisters. And yet, I came to this city, and one of the first persons I met was this young lady who was at Round Hill Elementary School where my daughter was in the four-year-old program. And she was so kind and loving and always encouraging. This young lady also not just encouraged me, she encouraged me to get involved in this community. I knew nothing about Roanoke, but I tell you now, I think I know every single corner of this, this city and more. Some things I don't want to know, I do know. But I do want you to know that she, when she first ran for City Council, she came up to me and tried to give me a car decal. And I looked at her and I said, "My husband does not want me to put none of those things on my car, but I'll take yours." Why? Because I believed in her, because she was very encouraging. She supported her community. She fought for her community. She believed in the children. That's something that I believe in, is working with our children in this community and to be able to encourage them. There's a lot of things that's going on, yes, indeed. Yes, there are gun violence. There are things that need to be changed. But in order to do that, we have to have the right people in place to be able to do the things that we need taken care of. And that's getting rid of some of this gun violence, the gang violence, all the things that are happening here. And we got to make sure that the people that we're putting in place are going to be the people that's going to be a change agent, somebody that's going to make a difference in this community. And I strongly believe the woman that's going to do that is Anita James Price. Anita James Price is the right candidate for this position. I can go on and on about Anita James and about what she's done in this community, how she's touched my life and many lives in this community, young and old. Dr. Hale has already spoke about all those things. But I just want you to know, you know, she's a woman with the biggest heart. And she'll cry in a minute because she cares a lot. This woman will make, I can go on and on about her, but I want you to know that she is a mother, she's a wife, she's a community leader. She has a big heart, and she's the one that's going to make that change that we need. So, ladies and gentlemen, Mayor Lee, Vice Mayor, all the City Council, I say thank you for this opportunity, but make the right decision. Anita James Price, thank you.
Barbara Andes.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, city staff. My name is Barbara Andes, and I live in the city. I was surprised pleasantly by the number of applicants for the open seat. As a council, I bet you wish that there was that level of interest at all the meetings and all the boards for all the positions that you all have open. But it was a pleasant, pleasant surprise. That's just an observation on my part. I was pleased that former council member Anita Price was interested in bringing her experience to bear and has considered stepping back into the role to get the council to a November special election. But I was even more pleased to see most of the applicants selected for interview were those, young Roanoker's, voices of a new generation, young leaders interested in public service in Roanoke. This afternoon's interviews were impressive. With the exception of one outlier, in my opinion, each of the applicants who appeared for an interview gave well-thought-out answers, a lot, you know, a lot of nuance to the questions that you all posed. Now, the challenge is yours to determine whose unique skills, experiences, and strengths are going to not only fill an empty seat, but truly expand on and strengthen this council in doing the good work that you are doing. And you are doing very good work. I mean absolutely no disrespect to any of the applicants, but after listening to today's interviews, I decided I do have a favorite. And that favorite is from among the young voices, the young leader applicants. I support the appointment of Luke Pretty for the open seat. Please consider the importance and value of adding Mr. Pretty's experience and knowledge of this council's function and its relationship to our state legislature. The work that's carried out here is dependent on understanding and knowing how the state laws, state legislature affects you all and what needs to, how that all works together. I really think that's an add, would be a really added strength to this dais. As a member of Senator Edward's staff, Mr. Pretty has proven that he knows how to listen to and serve constituents. He knows how to get work done. I will close you by encouraging all of you to keep Roanoke's City Plan 2040 in focus as you make this very difficult selection. And to choose the person that who, quote, to quote the plan, "will help to ensure the city's commitment to achieving a sustainable future by planning future," key word, "by planning for environmental, social, and economic well-being for all community members and the visitors to our beautiful city." Again, this is about now, but it's also about building our future and our future leaders. And I really hope you will give Luke Pretty the opportunity to fill the seat. Thank you.
Phoenix Kisi.
Good evening, City Council. First, I want to thank Mayor Lee and Vice Mayor Boyd White for the work you're doing in gun violence interruption and disruption, as well as the rest of City Council. Excellent work. I am coming here on behalf of myself. I am a Roanoke City resident, and I am also a survival of, survivor of domestic violence and sexual assault. I'm also a survivor of homelessness and crisis. And when I faced those things here, I got to see how completely overwhelmed all of the city systems are because of the problem we have with domestic violence. It's not just gun violence. It also shows up in private homes. We have a serious problem with domestic violence and sexual assault, and I really genuinely believe that you need a person who has survived those things to be able to communicate to you the kind of difficulty that facing that kind of crisis creates for a citizen. It is not something that you can go and sit in a classroom and learn about. It is not something that you can go on a trip overseas and figure out. It is only something that you can understand when you've come out the other side of it. Kaisha Preston has survived that, and the tide of tough courage and grit that it takes to not only survive that situation, but come out the other side as strong, as powerful, and as supportive as she is warrants her consideration for the City Council. When I met Kaisha Preston, it was during a protest. And I had no idea that she was running for City Council because she was so good at connecting as a human being. When I found out that's who I was talking to, I was doubly impressed because she was there, and she was in the moment, and she was being supportive of her community. People can say what they want about people who get involved in those kinds of civic activities, but I will tell you, as a former resident of Indian Rock Village, when my neighborhood underwent a tremendous amount of gun violence, it was No Justice, No Peace that sat with me on the sidewalk while I sat there crying and shaking. It was that group of people that people criticized that showed up for me and made sure that I had food on my doorstep when I couldn't go to the grocery store because I was nervous about leaving the house because of gun violence. And it was that community that showed up when I needed somewhere to go when I was in the middle of finding new housing to get away from gang violence. And that community that showed up for me when I needed to have some healing and some help and support. I look up to Kaisha Preston. When I found out what she did with legislation, that showed me that there's hope for people like me. That showed me that people care about survivors. When you hear things like, "No one's ever going to believe you. If you tell somebody, 'I'll destroy your life,' no one's going to listen to you. No one's going to believe you over them. It's your word against them." We need new legislation that protects survivors and holds people accountable in a loving and caring way, something that is rehabilitative. And I believe Kaisha Preston can bring that perspective to City Council.
William Solari.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
I'm here to say I'm really mad about the skate park. Just kidding. I like, Peg's a nice lady, too. Actually, the whole list of people is pretty great. And I think, again, we'd be lucky to have any of those people. But the person I show up for anytime they ask me to do anything is always Luke Pretty. And I'm just going to echo a lot of what everyone's already said about Luke. And it's that anytime I'm at a fundraiser, anytime I'm at a rally, anytime I'm at an event for something that I feel matters and is, creates impact for the city, Luke is there. Luke is there when we're running campaigns and need to know anything about rules, regulations, anything we can do to help, you know, get people in office, to get people in power, to get things, you know, on the progressive track that we all want for this city. Luke's always been that guy. You know, further his work for Senator Edwards is completely notable, and it goes to his just Wikipedia of knowledge that he has about procedure, state legislation, things that are going on that affect our city, and things that he can bring to our city, whether it's grants or opportunities. Luke has just always been that person. And on top of that, like everyone else said, and I'm no spring chicken anymore. I mean, Luke is the young future of this city. And he's available for a role that most people can't do, whether it's because of time or income or any of those things. Luke's able to make that happen where most people, you know, my age and younger, can't do that. And, I mean, just finally, he's an invaluable asset to this city. I just don't see a scenario in which having Luke as part of the council would ever be a detriment. And in fact, I can think of 1,500 different scenarios by which he could help aid in anything we want to get done or any ways we want to keep taking this city, you know, forward with everything that, all the great initiatives and things we already have going on. And I guess that's it. I mean, you know, beyond setbacks, beyond anything that would cause normal people to pack up and go home, whether things get too hard or things don't go your way, Luke keeps pushing through, and it's always for this city. And so I think, given the chance, he could do even more. Thanks.
Mayor Lee, that's the last speaker.
That's the last speaker.
That's the last speaker.
Mayor, I just wanted to make one comment, and that is that the agenda for this meeting was posted last Thursday, March 31. And in writing, the agenda reads, "Public hearings, received views of citizens regarding the applicants interviewed at 3:00 P.M. to fill the vacancy," in writing, on the agenda that was available since last Thursday. That's what it says. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that being the last speaker, I'm going to close the public hearing. And I want to express my appreciation for all of you all that came to speak on behalf of one of the five people that were interviewed today. And this appointment will be made on April 18th. We'll announce that appointment. So with that being said, council will stand in recess and reconvene on Monday, April 18th at 10:30 a.m. in the council chamber here to conduct interviews to select two candidates to serve on our Roanoke City school board trustee for three-year terms of office each commencing July 1st, 2022. With that being said, this session, we are in recess.